Thank you for coming to our EIB meeting this morning. Welcome in person. Great to see the fellow board members and our legal counsel and as well, Ms. Jones and all the other guests that we have here today. It looks like we have some more coming in. But we will continue to get started as we as we move through the agenda. One second here. All right, so it's nine oh one. And we'll officially start the meeting. And before us, our first item on our agenda, Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call to document who we have here today?
Yes, I'm going to call member Bitzer. Although I know he has, just for the record, he has, he's, he's told us that he's going to be absent. Member Eli, are you present?
Present.
Member Garcia?
Here.
Member Honker?
Here.
Chair Sweeney?
Here.
Vice Chair Trujillo? You have a quorum?
Thank you and welcome, everybody. All right, fellow board members, our next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And before we do that, I just want to take a minute. Do we have any amendments and proposed revisions? And one of those would be item number six, which is discussion regarding pending litigation to move that to after item number 10.
And Madam Chair, I do want to point out one of my own typos, and that's agenda item nine is EIB twenty-three fifty-six, not twenty-two fifty-six. So we need to make that amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. For that. Fellow board members, do you have any other changes to the agenda? Yes, member?
We approve the agenda with those two modifications.
Second, thank you, member Honker and member Garcia for your second with that. Ms. Jones, please do a roll call vote on that.
Member Eli, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number three, approval of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. And I understand, Ms. Jones, you shared this revised version of the meeting minutes?
I did. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to look it over. I think the substantial change was in item six.
So if you would, fellow board members, review the notes before us and see if you have any other changes on this latest version of the meeting minutes. You good? Well, wait a minute.
I will. We approve the minutes, the amended version of minutes that were displayed this morning.
Thank you, member Honker. Thank you, member Garcia. Just checking before moving on for a vote. If there are any other comments, questions, changes, discussion? Vice Chair Trujillo, are you good? All right, I'll look to you, Ms. Jones, to do a roll call vote on member Honker's motion to approve the latest version of the meeting minutes.
Okay, to approve the amended minutes. And member Eli, how do you vote?
Well, yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo? The, the motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. With that, we're going to move to item number four, public comment. And Ms. Jones, is there anybody that you're aware of that wanted to provide public comment this morning?
No one has approached me to provide any general comment this morning.
Do we have anybody here today? On any other comments other than what's on our agenda items? And online?
I saw him too, but it's gone.
Oh, there.
All right, let me unmute him.
Yes, hi and good morning. I just want to, to make sure that it's, the board wants to hear your comments right now on the advanced encourage to proposal, or is that that should be deferred?
And thank you, Mr. Bach. We'll hear any comments regarding any agenda items later on when those agenda items come up. Thank you, and we'll look forward to hearing from you later today. All right, other than that, there's nobody else on the?
I haven't.
Okay. Wonderful. So therefore, we'll move on to item number five, and that's the introduction of our new board counsel, Ms. Emily Bowen. And so, thank you for coming and welcome, and I just want to give you the floor to introduce yourself to everybody.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Emily Bowen, I'm with the AG's office. I just joined the Governor County Board of Division a couple of months ago, so I'm a little bit new, but I'm happy to be here and very excited to be your board counsel.
Thank you. And members, do you have any questions or?
Welcome.
Mute yourself.
There, okay. So welcome, and it's good to have. So you're, you're going to be permanent with us?
Yes, sir.
As far as permanent goes?
Permanent of the government.
Welcome. It's, it's very good to have, have you onboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Welcome on behalf of our board. And I'm so happy to have you on. We've had some rotation there while we had some transition there from our long-serving legal counsel, Ms. Solaria. So welcome and just happy you're here, and we're looking forward to collaboration and working with you. And please reach out to us if you have any questions. And this is just to share about our board. Great group of people. I found that everyone's very committed and passionate about those work and does their homework. And so we come with a lot of questions. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, we'll go on to our new item number six, which is the EIB twenty-two dash thirty-four, and that's Alto CEP, application for a stay of order reversing the NMD decision to deny air quality construction permit. And I believe we have Mr. Nasco here on, on the line.
He's on the platform, yes, Chair, and I've just sent him a message to unmute. So he should be able to unmute himself. Now, Mr. V Hill, I'll do that for you as well.
Okay, and just to add on to that, we have Mr. Rose here for Roper Construction and Mr. V Hill on the platform as well. And so I think right now, I think, I don't know if this is the order of people coming on, but I'll look to Mr. Nasco first and then just go through how it is listed here today.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members. So we are here on the seeking a stay of the order entered by this board reversing the decision of the Deputy Secretary to deny the air quality construction permit. We think it's an absolute miscarriage of justice. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it today because we have to be here according to the rules before we go to the Court of Appeals. So I don't harbor any illusions about what the result is going to be, but I want to give this board an opportunity to correct what I felt were grievous errors and a likely reversal of this board's opinion. Primarily because the board entered no findings of fact on disputed matters. Thereby rendering this decision totally, totally improper and, and subject to, we hope, summary reversal. I'd also like to say that, that although I respect this board and I respect the Chair's earlier comments about people being committed, I found this board to be woefully ill-prepared for that hearing. I found that the board members were confusing who was the petitioner, who had the burden of proof. They didn't discuss AP forty-two. They didn't discuss this board's previous adoption of AP forty-two being the gold standard that the US EPA has set for emissions. There is not one finding in this board's order as to why the AP forty-two emission standards specific for haul roads within a concrete batch plant was not applied in this case. There's not one finding entered by this board to show that the emissions factors for public roads where light vehicles are traveling seventy miles an hour is somehow representative of conditions at this plant. This board adopted the hearing officer's report, but then ignored it. Had this board allowed the hearing officer to make findings of fact, there's no question the way this matter would have come down. The board decided to not even discuss a matter that concerned the hearing officer greatly, which was the artificial reduction of the haul road lengths by Roper in order to achieve emission standards. In other words, he backed into the emissions. That's at page sixteen of our reply brief. We cite with specificity the hearing officer's response. There's no suggestion in this court, in this board's order that Roper even met his private, established a prima facie case to establish that, first of all, he complied with the air emission requirements to get a minor source permit. None whatsoever. As a matter of fact, this board just assumed that that was the case because the Environment Department said so. And then went on to say that Roper did, or excuse me, Alto didn't meet its burden of proof to establish that the permit should not be granted. That's not how it works. Roper has to establish a prima facie case A, to show, show that his modeling and the emissions proposed at this plant will satisfy the air quality standards. There's not one suggestion in the record, in this, in this order. The Roper even analyzed downwash structures, which we knew were going to increase emissions, but he didn't show you how or where. Their own air quality expert admitted that he didn't measure the distances between the emission sources and the downwash structures. Mr. Peters of the NMD testified explicitly that he had no idea whether Roper's trucks were going to use the entire length of the haul roads. If they were, then they would exceed the emission standards. There's no findings on that whatsoever. The whole thing was a waste of time and an utter waste of resources. And probably the most extreme disappointment I've had in a judicial or quasi-judicial hearing in my career. They go through this and then have the can kicked to the NMD because they said the permit should be granted. That's not how it works. It's a total misapplication of the burden of proof. The hearing officer himself flagged for this board because he wasn't authorized to enter conclusions of law or findings of fact, but he told you explicitly that, look, if you use the AP forty-two standard, the emission standards are going to be increased and he cannot satisfy the permit requirements. And the advantage, as for all the hearing, and this board should remember that, the NMD and this board said that that's the standard, AP forty-two, yet there's no indication as to why you deviated from that here. None whatsoever. As a matter of fact, in this particular instance, on the haul roads within a concrete batch plant, kind of stands to reason, I don't know that you got to be Clarence Darrow to convince someone that an emission standards for haul roads within a concrete batch plant should be used as the emission standards for haul roads within a concrete batch plant. But this standard, which the EPA specifically developed prospectively for use of concrete batch plants, received an A-one rating, meaning high confidence. That's not discussed by this board, never even considered by the board. I think one of the members said, well, you know, NMD thinks it's going to change their policy, the way they do things, so we're, we're just defer to them. Let them do what they want. In other words, they can do what they want in any particular instance. There's no findings on that whatsoever. The whole thing now becomes a meaningless review. We got to take to the Court of Appeals and try to get this board summarily reversed. The haul road length is very problematic. The hearing officer flagged that for you, and you didn't even dis-bother to discuss it. There was no discussion on it whatsoever. Didn't even end up in your order. There was an artificial reduction of the haul road length by fifty percent for certain trucks and no, no discussion of any water trucks in the emissions that they would entail. Not conspicuously absent from the order. And I'm glad you got a new counsel. Because the one you had here, by his own admission, had no experience in this matter, and he was shoot from the hip, and he led this board astray. As I mentioned, there's no dead structure, there's no indication of downwash, downwash structure. We don't have to do anything on that because that was Roper's burden to come forward and say, hey, these emission standards aren't going to be affected by structures on the property. Or if they are, here's to the extent they will be. But their own, their own air quality expert admitted he never measured the distance between the structures and the emission sources. So we have no idea. I'm glad, by the way, Ms. Prem is here because she's the one who testified on behalf of the department in both hearings that the NMD could certainly tell you, yeah, if you're going to use water suppression as the chief method or dust control and emissions control, you better show us where your water source is. She said they could do it, but they don't want to do it. You know, that's like in a solid waste hearing, saying you need a liner, but we're not going to tell you if your liner, what, what kind it has to be or whether it even works because we don't have jurisdiction to do that. It's absolutely ridiculous, and I don't think the Court of Appeals is going to put up with it. Finally, I think the conduct, conduct of this hearing itself, I hate to do this, but I got to do it. Because the conduct of this hearing constituted a due process violation to Alto and aside from being an utter waste of resources. Complete misstatements of the burden of proof. Complete flipping of the, of the notion of which party is the burden to come forward with evidence. Alto constantly identified as the petitioner. The chair had to remind people who was the petitioner, who was not. Then this notion that, well, Alto raised some good points, but we don't think it's enough to satisfy the burden. We don't have a burden. Roper has the burden of proof to show that the emission standards would be satisfied based on appropriate haul road lengths, based on appropriate use of AP forty-two factors and analysis of downwash structures and we're just going to get eighty-two thousand gallons of water a day to implement a phantom wet dust suppression system, which, by the way, is no longer a requirement in the order. The only evidence this board had before it, and it's not even evidence as to why it deviated from the AP forty-two standard was that Roper would sweep the roads. How was he going to sweep the roads? With a dustpan and a brew? There's no requirement, a permit that he have to do anything of that nature. And then in the hearing, when, when the board got, didn't want to make the decision that they should have entrusted the hearing officer to make, and he would have been happy to make them. It was just a deference to the NMD. Well, we're not going to make that decision. It's whatever the NMD wants. So I don't think this, 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 you know, I'm not going to stand and sit here and tell you that I know what the Court of Appeals is going to do because I don't. And, and it's a fool's errand to try to predict what appellate courts are going to do. But I can tell you this, that there's no findings in this order to support this arbitrary action of the EIB. And, and, and I feel good that the Court of Appeals is going to hopefully correct this miscarriage of justice because that's what it is. And I encourage all of you, at the end of the day, drive down to Highway two-twenty and go east on the Billy the Kid scenic byway. Go up in the neighborhoods east of the proposed plan. Look down and see what you've created. Because when these emissions sit in that valley and they exceed applicable standards, it's going to entirely disrupt that community. So this, this order ought to be stayed, and I'm going to give the board a chance to correct what I think is an infirmity in the process. And I would hope that they would, would. But with that, I, I appreciate it, Madam Chair, to be here, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nasco. And with that, we will go on to the legal counsel for Roper Construction, Mr. Rose. And so thank you, Mr. Rose, for being here. For yours.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Louis Rose. I'm with Montgomery and I'm here representing Roper Construction. With me is Ryan Roper of Roper Construction. We're here. You might not have gathered from Mr. Nasco's discussion, but we're here on their request for a stay. It's a stay of not just your order, but the permit itself, which authorizes Roper to construct and operate a concrete batch plant. The case law is pretty clear on what the elements need to be proven for a stay. That's laid out in the ball of the briefing. The, the seminal cases, Tentacle Oil versus the Mexico Water Polycell Control Commission from nineteen eighty-six, and what it spells out is there are four basic elements that need to be reviewed in in order to grant the stay, the petitioner has to provide evidence on each of these factors, which we'll get into. There is one, a likelihood that the applicant will prevail on merits. You heard Mr. Nasco talk about the Court of Appeals. From Roper's perspective, the Court of Appeals review of your decision is deferential. It's limited by the statute, which means it will only be reversed if your decision is arbitrary and capricious, not supported by substantial evidence in the record or not in accordance with law. My experience, that's a very difficult standard to prove at the Court of Appeals. Your decisions are given deference. There's a deference as to the regularity of the process. Quite frankly, I think it's a, a fairly large burden for them to establish and get this, get this order and this permit reversed by the Court of Appeals. And as we point out in our brief, we think that your decision is is appropriately supportable by both the record in this case and the law. As to the other three factors, which are showing irreparable harm to the applicant unless a stay is granted, what you have is the word of counsel in conjecture, and the counsel's argument is not evidence. There's no evidence in the record that, that we can find that that establishes irreparable harm to the applicant if the stay is granted. That is, if, if Mr. Roper is allowed to continue construction and operating the plant, there's no showing what kind of harm that would cause the applicant in this case. The, the third is evidence of no substantial harm will result to other interested persons. And that includes Roper Construction. As we pointed out in Mr. Roper's here, available to answer questions, he's in the process of constructing the facility. He's expended capital funds to purchase the equipment, which will be installed. And obviously, he'll need to operate the plant to recoup that investment. And what we're talking about is staying here. The applicant's request for the stay for during the tendency of the Court of Appeals, a review of this matter, and based on experience, and you can look to the items that your counsel discussed later in this meeting. On average, it's our experience that the Court of Appeals takes eighteen months to two years to decide these cases. In fact, we have an argument in front of the Court of Appeals later this month, and a permit appeal from this board. That's, that's been a waiting decision for over two years on the Court of Appeals. And once we make the argument, we still don't expect to get a decision for three to six months. So we're looking at two, two and a half years potentially for a stay to be in effect, under which case Mr. Roper would end up having to stop construction, mothball the equipment, and not be able to operate and make back the funds that he's already expended. And, and they're substantial. These plants aren't cheap towards being able to operate. So that's, that necessarily needs to be considered. There's no evidence from the applicant as to what the harm is of other interested persons. And fourth, there needs to be a showing that no harm will ensure to the public interest. There, there's no showing and no testimony in the record and certainly none offered by the applicant in this proceeding to establish that no harm will ensue to the public interest. So from a strictly legal perspective, we believe that that the applicant has not established and not submitted proof on all of the elements required for a stay, and therefore, the stay should be denied. And quite frankly, the discussion you've heard from Mr. Nasco with respect to this board's order really is akin to asking the board to reconsider its prior decision. The matter's not currently before the board except for a stay. It's on appeal to the Court of Appeals, which now has jurisdiction over the matter. Even if he wanted you to reconsider your order, you couldn't. But secondly, there's no basis for you to reconsider. As we pointed out in the brief, and the department did as well. You know, Roper established through testimony in the record concerning the propriety of of its application, demonstrated that no ambient air quality standards would be violated, no PSD increment would be exceeded, and no emission regulation of this board would be exceeded if Roper Construction were to operate in accordance with the permit. There's no evidence, the evidence to the contrary submitted by Alto CEP. While there may have been evidence on concerns about the modeling and the AP forty-two emission factor that was used, the department not only agreed with Roper in terms of the modeling analysis and the permit application and its approvability, in fact, a number of the issues that that Alto CEP raised in the hearing concerning the adequacy of the modeling were actually requirements from the Air Quality Bureau's modeling staffs, such as the meteorological data to be used and whether it should be from from the Holloman Air Force Base as opposed to the Sierra Blanca Airport or as Roper originally proposed from the Alamo Gordo Airport. The AP forty-two emission factor. There was testimony from Roper's witness as well as from the department that the AP, that the AP, that the emission factor used was in fact from AP forty-two. There's, the debate is over which AP forty-two emission factor is appropriate. The department specified the AP forty-two factor that it determined was appropriate. It's the same emission factor that they've required to be used in any number of permit applications for concrete batch plants and similar facilities. You had testimony from Mr. Roper's expert, Paul Wade, who's had more than a handful of these kinds of permit applications, both with the Environment Department and the City of Albuquerque, and that this emission factor was used for all of those applications. So this, if, if the department were to and the board were to adopt Alto CEP's proposal, that would be a divergent divergence from standard practice, and it would be a divergence for which Roper was not given notice, not given the opportunity, nor was any other interested person given the opportunity to provide evidence. So we believe based on all of those that the court will review your action and sustain it. And therefore, we would ask that you denied the, the application for a stay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. With that, we'll go to Mr. V Hill, who's on the platform.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. We're here today on Alto's motion for stay. And the presentation that Mr. Nasco gave, while I admire his, his frankness in disclosing how he feels about all of in disclosing how he feels about all of us, it didn't touch on the motion itself. And in order for Mr. Nasco and Alto to achieve a stay, they got to meet four conditions for tentacle, if the board's going to follow the tentacle case. And they didn't do it. The first one is whether or not they would prevail on the merits of the Court of Appeals. Mr. Nasco expressed some confidence that they will prevail. I don't think so. As, as Mr. Rose had pointed out, the statute allows for the Court of Appeals to overturn the EIB if it's arbitrary and capri, if his decision is arbitrary, capricious, and abusive discretion or not in accordance with the law. We had a three-day hearing. Everyone submitted quite a bit of documentary and, and oral evidence. I think that the board did a really good job of considering all of, all of the evidence presented. And I, I don't think that anyone who looks at what the EIB did, who watches the video, and the video's going to be submitted to the Court of Appeals, so they'll be able to see the hearing and the decision itself. It was a, a carefully decided decision, a carefully discussed and deliberated decision, excuse me. I don't think anyone's going to walk away from that, in anyone who is fair-minded, saying that it was arbitrary, capricious, and abusive discretion. Mr. Nasco seems to seize on perceived imperfections in the deliberation process to sort of raise the specter of, I don't know, I guess he's implying that something unformed happened. But, you know, deliberate, the deliberation process is imperfect. And I think the Court of Appeals will see that. So they didn't meet the first tentacle condition. The second is that Alto did not establish that they are going to suffer irreparable harm. You know, there is no real reason why the EIB needs to stay this. There's an opportunity for a stay at the Court of Appeals. Now, I, I'm going to go ahead and speculate a little bit. It seems to me that the Court of Appeals is, is somewhat better situated to decide whether this case merits a stay or not. Mr. Nasco also raised in his pleadings the idea that somehow the Alto Coalition had some sort of right to the preservation of property values. That's not a right. There is no such right. The, no one is taking their property, and you don't have the right to a particular property value. They go up, they go down. That's just part of the free market. That's just part of the way that it works. So they have not shown, and, and actually, they presented no evidence that they would suffer any harm at all. So to, we, they presented a bare claim, and they failed on, on the second condition of tentacle. I, I won't go into the harm that, that Mr. Roper will suffer. I do think that, and I do concur with the presentation of Mr. Rose, and I'll go ahead and leave it at that. And I do want to say a little bit about the public interest in, from NMD's perspective. And I said this before in many hearings, and I'll say it again. NMD represents everybody. We represent every person who buys a Snicker bar at 7-Eleven. We represent Mr. Roper. We represent every member of the Alto Coalition. We represent Mr. Nasco. We represent everybody in New Mexico. And so, we have to be very, very careful with regard to how we steward that responsibility, steward that responsibility. And it is our view that it is in the public interest that the laws are followed, that legal decisions are respected, and that the, the process for issuing a permit be followed and respected. And those individuals who qualify for a lawful permit should be able to proceed without sort of undue harassment to, to proceed, uh, doing whatever business it is, whether it's producing asphalt, concrete, or, or exploring for oil and gas. So there's a lot of, a lot of different things that we regulate. Mr. Roper's facility is one of them. And it is not in the interest of New Mexicans to have this sort of endless litigation that's basically essentially a de facto zoning case. It's, it, it is a waste of taxpayer money. And I think that, that the EIB would do well to sort of back out of this matter. The EIB's done a good job, in my view. It's now at the Court of Appeals. There's also separate matters at the District Court. And there is no need for a third tribunal to be continuously, to be continuously involved in this matter. So we're asking that the board deny the stay, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. V. Hill, for your presentation as well, and all three attorneys for your presentation. With that, I just want to look to the board as well, take a moment. Is there any questions or comments? Yes, Member Hunker?
Yeah, I have, I guess it's a procedural question of Mr. Nasco. And I believe you said at the beginning of your presentation that you had to come to us and request a stay first. Does that mean procedurally, we have to decide that? And then if we don't decide in your favor, then you can request a stay from the court? What, what is the procedure?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Member Hunker. Madam Chair, may I do a brief rebuttal first and then address Mr. Hunker, Member Hunker's question, Madam Chair?
Um, can, can we, um, I would like to just ask, have the questions answered.
The answer is yes. The answer, the short answer is yes, to Member Hunker, that the, the regulations require us in the statute to, to file the motion for a stay. We wouldn't be otherwise, there's no question about that. And, yeah, and, and if the, if this board denies the motion, then we can, we can present it to the Court of Appeals. But we cannot go to the Court of Appeals on the motion to stay without going here first. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Hunker, for that question. I do have a follow-up question, and it would be to legal counsel, Ms. Bowen. What, what is your input on, on some of the procedural aspects of this, about the stay? Do we have to consider that first? And then they, then that is a required step?
It, it is. I, I agree with Mr. Hunker. These are the parts that prove for the board to consider the stay, especially now that we've had a hearing and evidence has been presented. As noted by, by counsel, there are four factors that this board will need to consider. I can provide those again if you, if you all need. And then there will have to be, if you decide we grant the stay, it'll have to be by two-thirds vote. In addition, and to discuss this further, folks are welcome to go into closed session. Because this would be a panel work for a question.
Yes, Member Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just also another procedural question, just a point of clarification. That was a question for, for you, so. The request from Mr. Nasco is, I think it should be stay or order reversing NMD decision. So just to be clear, we are ruling on a stay, not to consider reversing our decision, correct? So just to keep that separate and just to make sure that we're only making the decision on one thing?
That is correct. Just for the stay.
You can, since you offered, I was trying to write down the four elements, but if you would go through, I, I hope so that I have them all down, so, thank you.
Absolutely. The first one is the likelihood that the movement, in this case, Alto CEP will prevail on the merits of the appeal. The second one is whether the moving party will suffer irreparable harm if a stay is not granted. The third one is whether substantial harm will result to other interested persons. And the fourth one is whether harm will ensue to the public interest. And in this case, that burden was on Alto's, so each of those elements. And each one of those must be considered by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Anybody else have any, any other, board members have any questions?
No, I, just a comment, Madam Chair. I just want to remind the board petitioners that I recuse myself in this case and not be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Member Ailey, for that. And just point of clarification and to document, even though Member Ailey has recused herself, we still have a forum with the four board members here. So I just wanted to make sure that's noted on the record as well. Is there any other questions that the board has? Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes, my, my has also a procedural question. Um, we, Mr. Rose mentioned that the, the bond, oh, reopen and reverse our decision. And I saw you, you have that followed and whatever state. And that is correct. But for this time, this is just for the stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo. A follow-up, if I may, to Member Garcia's question to you, legal counsel, Bowen. So the petition, as was presented, was for, you know, to frame the denial or to reverse the petition from Alto CEP. Is there a way to just, to Member Garcia, as I just point a clarification, that we can consider just the stay and not the reversal?
You can consider just the stay, is, is my understanding. It, it is phrased awkwardly, in that it seems to be a request to reopen this matter rather than a request to stay the permit. And I would actually ask for just a bit of time, if you wouldn't mind, to, to double check on that, Chair, to make sure, since this is kind of an awkward way for them to phrase this motion.
May I comment on that, Madam Chair?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Nasco. A Member Garcia has a call.
One point that may have relevance to this is that it's no longer in our jurisdiction, except for the stay. I mean, it's in the Court of Appeals now. So maybe that's why we only, only make a ruling on the stay and not reversing the decision. Is that, is that true?
And, and that is a good point. That's true. It's not really necessarily within your jurisdiction anymore to reopen this case, nor would that be proper. It's, my concern here is the way that Alto's motion was phrased. So if you make a decision based on the terminology used by Alto, it may be misstrued. And that's why I want to double check on this. And once again, folks, if you want to go into closed session and discuss this further, you're more than welcome to do that.
Okay, thank you. Really quick, I do want to, Mr. Nasco, give you a couple minutes to share your thoughts on this. I know you raised your hand there. Mr. Nasco?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, let's just, let's make, make sure there's no confusion here whatsoever. The motion is for a stay of this EIB's order, period. It's not to revisit the decision. That, this, this, the board is divested from jurisdiction because the matter has been appealed. But the board retains jurisdiction to stay its order if it believes that there's a likelihood that its order is infirm and, and, and under the tentacle factors that it should be stayed. Now, now, I just want to make a couple of points on that, if I may. It's not only Mr. Rose has been quite candid with, with this board in terms of stating that we're not going to suffer irreparable harm, but Mr. Roper is. Well, Judge Sugg, there's a companion case here, you probably all know about. Judge Sugg has the.
Objection, Mr. Nasco is.
Hold on.
Proceeding again.
Mr. V. Hill, this is what I'm talking about.
Excuse me, Mr. Nasco, Mr. V. Hill. So, Mr. Nasco, again, just wanted to have your input just on the, the discussion of the language for the stay.
Madam Chair, I need to know for the record, it might be denied the opportunity of a rebuttal argument?
No, no, you are not. But if we can just try to, you know, have a very specific discussion on, on some of our, our items and maybe not go too far beyond what we're discussing.
Madam Chair, I've answered that question, that our motion, I don't know what the confusion is, my counsel on our motion. Our motion is to stay the order of the EIB pending the appeal to the Court of Appeals. It's not to reverse your order. It's not to reconsider it. It's to stay it. In other words, it does not go into effect until the Court of Appeals has an opportunity to review the matter as being arbitrary and capricious and contrary to law.
Thank you, Mr. Nasco. And I just want to take a brief moment and just check in with the board. And I, I understand what you just shared. And I just want to look at the board and, and kind of take a pulse if we are all on the same page of the language. I think I feel better about the language myself. I don't know. If you have any other questions? So with that, Mr. Nasco, I just wanted to do that brief check-in so that you know that we've heard that, that discussion and that point. So I hope, and I just want to say, that provided clarity to me. So I appreciate that, that discussion and that point that you had. With that, Mr. Nasco, I will give you another minute or in a couple minutes to talk a little bit about what you wanted to talk about.
I'd like to do so without interruption from Mr. V. Hill. I'm going to see preliminarily, Mr. V. Hill says he represents everyone. He obviously doesn't represent the secretary, because the secretary recommended denial of this permit. He doesn't recommend, he doesn't represent me, and doesn't represent my clients, because my clients are going to suffer irreparable environmental harm if this plant is able to go forward. Mr. Rose talked about how Mr. Roper is going to suffer irreparable harm. But that's not true, because Judge Sugg has prevented that from happening. He, he reviewed this EIB deliberations. He reviewed them all and said, in open court, they were thoroughly confused, referring to you. He has entered a restraining order preventing Mr. Roper from operating this plant if indeed he constructs it. Apparently, he's going forward with the construction. But he can't operate it until Judge Sugg rules on the preliminary injunction on the excessive noise factor. So I want to just go back. Everyone's being, this is a real intellectual exercise. You're going to meet the four tentacle factors. It's pretty simple. A, there's no action that can be termed more arbitrary and more capricious than an administrative agency that does not enter findings of fact supporting its decision. No deference in the world can cure that malady. We don't think it's going to be two years. We think it's going to be summary reversal. We want to give the chance to this board to say, look, as our, our conclusion in our, our brief said, we're asking the board to temporarily stay implementation by Roper or the NMD of EIB's final order pending resolution of Alto's appeal from the EIB final order to the New Mexico Court of Appeals. That's pretty clear. So environmental harm is irreparable harm by definition. We have that in our favor. If this plant is constructed, it's too late, the toothpaste is out of the tube, and you can't put it back. So it makes more sense now, before that eventuality occurs, because Roper is just going to go forward and do what he wants to do. He's doing it to thumb his nose at you, Judge Sugg, and the Court of Appeals. He doesn't care. And we don't want this constructed, having to have, we'll have him take it down. He's got to be aware of that. So I want to be very clear here. In this business, but Mr. Rose said, hey, you chose AP-42. Well, AP-42 has a variety of emission factors. You got to prove, you got to select the right one. And to say that we're not going to select the one for concrete, haul road, batch plants when we're building a batch plant is just, it's inexplicable to me that that can occur. So we do think we're going to be successful here. We do think there's irreparable harm. And Roper's not going to suffer any harm whatsoever, because he can't operate under Judge Sugg's order. So I would request that this board simply stay its order and let the Court of Appeals straighten it out. We're not going to ask you to reverse it. We're not going to ask you to reconsider it. Just recognize that there's a substantial likelihood of reversal under the tentacle, and, and under the tentacle factors, we ought to get that stayed.
Thank you, Mr. Nasco. Appreciate that. With that, I just want to look to the board, and if we wanted to discuss more to legal counsel's suggestion in, in closed session, some additional aspects of this. If, I don't know if, if you feel comfortable. If, I don't know if, if you feel comfortable with that or if you want to discuss this more. I just want to get a pulse from, from our board members.
I'm, I'm okay either way.
Okay.
I'm fine, open for, in the session, you don't have to discuss it.
Okay. How about you, Vice Chair Trujillo?
I was going to suggest closing the room.
Okay. And you, Member Hunker?
I'm good either way, but we have a member who's prepared for those doors, so.
Okay.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
I did a follow-up question.
Okay.
Mr. Nasco's claim about the restraining order, but Mr. Rose, did you want to speak to that for us?
Sure. And I'm sure Mr. Nasco will correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the order entered by Judge Sugg was a district court judge, Grendoso, is that Mr. Roper is precluded from operating. He's not precluded from constructing. And it's only until the judge rules on the pending requests for preliminary injunction, as Mr. Nasco said on the question of noise, the judge's analysis doesn't relate to air quality, it relates to noise. And the matter's been fully briefed. It's been argued. There's been evidence presented. We believe that, that Judge Sugg, if he takes much longer, well, you know, we're, we're looking at a decision in the next, we'd hope we'd have a decision by now, but, but we think it will occur you know, within the next month or two. So that, that's the status. Now that, even if the preliminary injunction is denied, I assume Mr. Nasco would go forward with his case to potentially the trial before Judge Sugg. So we're only dealing with, in essence, in this case, a preclusion for operating until the judge rules on, on the pending preliminary injunction motion.
Thank you for that, if not, for us.
Thank, thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo. With that, I, is, would you want to discuss more in closed session? I'm just leaving it. Yeah, so let's, um.
We can have a roll call later, closed session.
Yes, so. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session for EIB 22-34.
And just to be clear, that motion would be pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 1015-1H, subsection 3, yes?
So. Thank you, Member Garcia and Vice Chair Trujillo, seconds. With that, Ms. Jones, I would appreciate a roll call vote on the motion on the table.
Yes, I'm, I, yes, now I won't call Member Ely. Okay. Member Garcia, your vote?
Yes.
And Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I think we can go into closed session.
Thank you. The motion to enter closed session carries. Let the record show the board entered, will enter into closed session at about 9:55. Enough time for people to get to, you know, leave the room, and then we will be off the record.
Yep.
We still have to deal with the people that are attending virtually, so if you're going to stay in this room.
Yes, so, Ms. Jones, what?
If I, I will, I will mute this, which will cancel any noise from this room, but then we would have to ask members that aren't board members to, to exit the room right now. Okay.
Okay.
And I will stop the recorder.
Therefore, we All right.
There are a lot of good non-happities you can don't
So far.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, everybody, for coming back. The board is back in open session and on the record. The current time is 10:27 a.m. And let the record show the matters discussed during the closed session were limited only to those specified in the motion for closure, and no votes or official action was taken. So with that, like I said, we're back on record, and I think we got folks on the platform still. Back again, just to re-ground ourselves, EIB 22-34, Alto CEP's application for a stay of order reversing the NMD decision to deny air quality construction permit. So with that, fellow board members, and I just want to reiterate, Ms. Board Member Ely was not here in closed session, and she has already put on the record that she's recused herself from this matter. So just looking to the other fellow board members here, is there any discussion, motions that you would like to consider?
Hearing no discussion, I'll make a move.
Thank you, Member Hunker.
Upon consideration of the four factors this board is required to review, specifically, one, the likelihood that the move movement will prevail in the merits of the appeal. Number two, whether the moving party will suffer irreparable harm if stay is not granted. Number three, whether substantial harm will result to other interested persons. And number four, whether harm will ensue to the public interest. In consideration of, of all those factors and our consideration of those factors, I move that the board decide there is not been cause to grant the stay and that the board deny the stay.
Thank you, Member Hunker, for your motion. And do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Member Garcia. With that, looking at the board, if there's any further discussion with the motion on the floor, seeing none, look to Ms. Jones for a roll call vote on Member Hunker's motion.
Member Garcia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Madam Chair, your motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for that. So with that, the completes this agenda item, and thank you, everybody who was in attendance for this agenda item. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, EIB 23-52R. And this is in the matter of proposed amendments to 20.2.77 NMAC. With that, it looks like we have Mr. V Hill as legal counsel for NMD. Mr. V Hill, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. This is a routine rulemaking that happens every few years. We haven't had a rulemaking to incorporate the most current, or at least a number of the most current federal regulations into the air quality regulations. And so we are just essentially trying to bring the New Mexico rules in updated accordance with the federal rules. And so it's very straightforward. I, I don't think there's any controversy. We've had no input. We will, of course, do public notice and solicit any input, but I, I think this is really just a routine clerical matter. And I'll leave it to the board to discuss whether or not they'll grant the petition. And what we're asking is today, we're asking that you grant the petition and that we set a hearing today, a day, a hearing date, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill. And I just want to note, we have Member Ely back on, on the record to discuss this as well, along with the other board members present. Fellow board members, do you have any questions or comments related to Mr. V Hill's presentation in this agenda item? Yes, Member Ely?
Madam Chair, Mr. V Hill, it's a, you're proposing a four-hour hearing. Does the timing of the hearing matter? Do you need to have this accomplished by the end of the year?
Did, you cut off, you, did you ask if we need it by the end of the year?
Yes, is it, oh, does the timing of the hearing matter?
And It does, it matters with our schedule, and, and actually, if the board is open to this, I would like to invite our rulemaking team to discuss this because I think we have a number of calendar issues that we may need to discuss. Is the board open to hearing from the rulemaking team, meaning the witnesses, the, the people who develop the rules themselves?
Yes, Mr. V Hill, looking at fellow board members, is that all right? Yes, yes, that's, that's, that's amenable to us.
Okay, thank you so much. And that would be Kirby Olson, Armando Paz, and Mr. Baca.
We'd very like to move
Yeah, and we have some here in the room, it looks like. So please move
Okay.
to the table and
I, I can't see. The screen's very small. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Give them a moment to settle in. Welcome. All right, Mr. V Hill, we do have some of the team here at the table. So again, the floor is yours, including the team members that came up to the table.
Yeah, I, I just, I guess I would just ask the team if they have any, any non-starter dates. First of all, and, and I'm assuming we want to get this done by the end, you know, before the end of the year. But, you know, everyone's heavily scheduled, and there may be vacations. Are there any dates that any of you absolutely can't make?
Yes, the floor is open.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I won't be able to make the last week of November. It's the whole week.
Okay. And just for the record, can you just say?
My name is Armando Paz, but they have already brought my name on this.
All right. Okay. And go ahead and introduce yourself and
Okay, I'm Kirbyles, the section chief for planning, bringing this regulation to hearing. I do not myself have any restrictions on time. I would like to echo Mr. V Hill's request if possible to do it by the end of the year, only so that the adoption will be as current as possible. The adoption's through a certain date.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Baca, would you introduce yourself?
Chairwoman Sweeney and members of the board, my name is Michael Baca. I'm the Control Strategies Manager for the Air Quality Bureau. On the matter of timing, I do not have any conflicts right now, either in November or December for this hearing. So I think any time would be fine. I can add that this is not a time-sensitive matter. We would like to get this adopted just for our own purposes, to have it up to speed and up to date so that we can ensure our enforcement of the federal regulations is, is in line. So this is more of a, a matter to get us and make sure that our enforcement authorities are, are delegated positive.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. Members of the board, do you have any other questions as we, because as you see, we have a number of hearings that, or requests for hearings coming up. Yes, Member Hunker?
Just curious, Mr. V Hill, as to why you think the hearing will take four hours?
Well, I think that's just the, the, the rough guesstimate. It, it, it probably will not take that long, I think. I, I think that if we do a good job on the statement of intent to to introduce technical testimony, if we do a very good job of explaining exactly what we're doing, and if we don't have any opposition, which I don't anticipate, you know, I, I, I actually, I anticipate zero opposition from the public, I should say, then, you know, it, it's conceivable that we could get the testimony done, particularly if we adopt a kind of 15-minute testimony rule where we summarize the testimony, give the testimony in detail in writing. If the board is open to that, then yes, I think we can do it much quicker.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill. Any other questions, members of the board? Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo?
Okay, just for my clarification, and I think I got this right, but this is just an adoption of rules that have already been promulgated by EPA. Okay. Yes, I would pick four hours.
Yes. All right. With that, board members, I want to do a check-in with you as well on any schedule conflicts that you might have as well. I'm just putting out our schedules, if you have them pulled up. If there's anything that you know, time, you know, you will be away. Yes, Member Hunker?
I will be out of the country for about two weeks, right in the middle of October, so.
Okay.
I will be back for the, for the October 27th, you know, E meeting.
Yes.
I think so.
Yes.
I might not, I believe that with the 60-day notice, maybe it hasn't been noticed yet, so it would, probably earliest would be November. So, yeah, so maybe our November meeting is possible.
Yeah, and then we also just have some communication about looking at November hearing for one of the items here. And then we have Thanksgiving. Ms. Jones just reminded me, normally, we have our meeting the last Friday of the month, and that would be November 24. And then with our potential board meeting. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we have usually Thanksgiving break, 23rd, 24th, eating turkey on the Friday. So, you know, just something to put on your radar. So the next, the Friday before would be November 17. Is that?
November 17.
Okay. Vice Chair?
Would you outlast in the last one?
Yeah.
My last, oh, that's
However, wasn't there else, maybe another request that is for a similar time period for the next, for this next agenda item? That we don't want to, you know, push our right into interfere. Okay.
Correct, correct. Yes, thank you for double checking that, and it looks like we're looking at earlier that week.
But yeah, do the
So if the 17th works? Seeing head shake, yes.
Okay.
So tentatively, the 17th, and then be our normal monthly board meeting with the hearing. All right.
Hearing officer.
Okay, and then discussion about, so we tentatively, that date's good for this one. And then hearing officer, is there a need for a hearing officer for this? Um, I don't know, we, Mr. V Hill? Yes.
I don't, I don't anticipate we need a separate hearing officer. And I think if we get a hearing officer today, then maybe we can move on to some preliminary matters that might move it along, including, you know, a discussion of a scheduling order and that kind of thing. So NMD doesn't feel that we need a hearing officer separate from any hearing officer, you know, who, from the board whom I volunteer.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I want to look to the board. I know a number of us have served as hearing officers on these straightforward amendments. So I don't know if you want to, yes, Member Ely?
I'm going to offer to be the hearing officer at this.
Thank you for that.
I second.
Wonderful. So we have Member Ely willing to be a hearing officer for this EIB 23-52. And then I think you had mentioned scheduling. I think we got a good date, November 17. Is there anything else? Um, is there anything else I'm missing, I'm looking to our legal counsel of, of discussion or consideration before one of our board members, um, or we consider a motion? No? Okay, um, Mr. V Hill, just doing one last check with you, is there anything that we need to discuss logistically for this item?
No, and I, I, um, you know, when I was speaking about preliminary matters, I'm forgetting there's no other party, so I'm, I'm sort of speaking as if there's another party, and I don't anticipate any other parties joining, so I think, uh, with, uh, member Eli, uh, in place, then the schedule will be dictated by the rules, and, and of course, we will follow through with the notice and the, and the statement of intent to present technical testimony and so on and so forth. Um, I, I, we don't have to figure this out now, um, and I can communicate to, um, uh, to board council, but we do need, um, uh, a, a transcript, and so we would need a court reporter, but I'll just leave that for now, that's something we can work out later.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill. Uh, with that, uh, fellow board members, and so can we consider a motion? Uh, for, yes, member Garcia?
I move that we set, uh, E I B twenty three dash fifty two for hearing on November seventeen. With, uh, with, uh, member Eli as our hearing officer.
I will second.
Thank you, member Garcia, and member Honker, looking around, just double checking, no further discussion. With that, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote?
Member Eli, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, with that, we have, um, a date and hearing day, thank you all for being here. Um, and that takes us to our next item, E I B twenty three. Fifty six, in the matter of proposed amendments to twenty dot two dot ninety one N M A C. Which is New Mexico or new motor vehicle emission standards, advanced clean cars and advanced clean truck rules. And we have Mr. Knight, uh, legal counsel for N M E D, welcome, Mr. Knight.
Thank you.
Oh, and also, uh, your column.
Yes, good morning, uh, Chair Sweeney and members of the board. Uh, my name is Andrew Knight, I am assistant general counsel for the New Mexico Environment Department. And with me today is Claudia Orchard, the climate change bureau chief, also with N M E D. And we are here to present our petition to you, uh, regarding E I B twenty three fifty six. Our petition for, uh, amendments to twenty point two point nine one. New motor vehicle emission standards, uh, in which we colloquial, colloquially call advanced clean cars and advanced clean truck rules. Uh, and I would, uh, with the board's permission, I would like to, uh, have the, uh, bureau chief give a five minute kind of summary of, of what this proposal uh, entails and, and why we feel it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, and thank you for coming today, uh, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, good morning, Chair Sweeney and members of the board. We would like to give a preview of the proposed amendments and brief explanation why they are important for New Mexico. The petition before you, N M E D's proposal of amendments to part ninety one, which the I, E I B approved in May of last year. The proposal amends the existing parts, part ninety one to bring New Mexico standards in conformity with the new advanced clean car two or A C C two program adopted by the California Air Resources, Resources Board last year. Ensuring that New Mexico's standards remain identical to the California program and thus enforceable in the federal law. In addition to the more stringent pipe emissions standards for internal combustion engines, A C C two requires that forty three percent of the new passenger cars and trucks and auto makers delivered to New Mexico be zero emission vehicles, or Z E S, beginning in model year twenty seven. In the proposed amendments, the Z E S stringency increases through model year twenty thirty two. When eighty two percent of the new vehicles delivered to New Mexico must be zero emission vehicles. Z E S include electric vehicles, hydrogen fueled battery vehicles, and some plug in hybrid. Preliminary analysis indicates the cumulative total cost of ownership savings to New Mexico drivers through the twenty forty, resulting from the rules, if implemented, is over a billion dollars. Attributable primarily to fuel switching from gasoline to electricity. The proposed rules also include new provisions to adopt California's advanced clean trucks, or A C T. And heavy duty vehicle omnibus, or low notch rules. Like the A C C two rules, these rules provide more stringent emission standards for the tailpipe emissions of new heavy duty trucks. And stimulate the manufacturers deliver increasing percentages of zero emission medium heavy duty vehicles to New Mexico beginning in model year twenty twenty seven. Exact percentage under the proposed rules varies depending on the vehicle weight classification. However, by twenty thirty five, fifty percent of the new medium heavy duty trucks delivered to New Mexico will be divided zero emission vehicles. These A C T and low notch rules are particularly impactful on the health outcomes of low income and disadvantaged communities who just support family, live along transportation routes with heavy truck traffic. Experts estimate this cumulative savings in avoided health costs and deaths in harmful air pollutants are at least twenty five billion dollars by twenty. Proposed rules allowed under section one seventy seven of the Clean Air Act, under which the states may adopt the California standards. Uh, are when they are more stringent than the federal standards. The rules, however, must be identical to the standard adopted in California and must apply statewide. N M E D is working closely with the city of Albuquerque Environmental Health Department on their nearly identical proposed rules, so that part ninety one, under E I B's authority, and part one of four under the Albuquerque Burn Leo County Air Quality Control Board, combined, provide the needed statewide.
Thank you. Um. So, uh, Chair Sweeney and members of the board, um, the petition we filed last month includes, uh, a petition for hearing. Uh, our statement of reasons for adoption of the rule and, uh, the draft, the language of the, uh, proposed amendment to part ninety one. Today, we are here to request, uh, a hearing, and, uh, we, there, there are some very, uh, specific parameters that, that, uh, we feel like we need to request for this particular hearing. Uh, first of all, as with the adoption of, uh, part ninety one last time. Uh, we are requesting that you hold a joint hearing with the Albuquerque Burn Leo County Air Quality Control Board. Uh, the Albuquerque Burn Leo County Board met last Wednesday, and they approved having a joint hearing with you. So, uh, should that be your decision today? And, uh, we will note that, uh, uh, that board also, uh, uh, voted that live Spanish interpretation would be, uh, provided, uh, at that hearing. Um. The second request is that because we are trying to, um, get this rule in place by January first, and because of the public notice requirements, uh, for rulemakings before this board. We are in a position where we need to have this joint hearing take place on very specific dates, and, uh, those dates are November thirteenth through sixteenth of this year. In order to have a final decision by, by this board in time to file the rules and have them become effective, uh, in accordance with the State Rules Act. Uh, and so we are, we are kind of sandwiched between the, the sixty day notice period and the requirements of the State Rules Act, which, which are very specific, as, as you know, so. It, it comes down to the fact that, uh, in order to have uh, a four day hearing, that it would have to occur on exactly November thirteenth through sixteenth. And, uh, the other part of that request is that, uh, we have been, uh, searching diligently for locations to have this hearing, and, uh, every location, uh, has, uh, its, its own issues, and we're, we're trying to find a location that, uh, meets all the requirements, the, the, the board, the Albuquerque Burn Leo County Board. Uh, by statute, they must meet within Burn Leo County. So, uh, the one location, the one best location that we've been able to find that meets all of the logistical requirements and is also available during those dates is, uh, the State Bar Center located at fifty one twenty one Masthead, uh, northeast in Albuquerque. And, uh, we, uh, if the board approves that location, uh, today, we can, we can reserve that location and, uh, uh, secure it for, for the hearing. And, uh, we anticipate the hearing will, will require up to three days. And we are suggesting the fourth day as needed, and, uh, to include deliberations. We were asking, as we did with the last joint, uh, hearing for this rule, we would, uh, ask that both boards deliberate immediately or the day following the hearing, so that, uh, we can get a hopefully, uh, get a final order in place, uh, by, uh, November twenty seventh at the latest. Uh, I think that's what we've calculated, so, uh, and if both, I guess the idea is that if both boards, both boards will deliberate separately as they did last time. But, uh, again, for, for this to work, uh, both boards need to adopt, um, rules whose requirements are identical. So there, there will be slight differences in the rules as there were last time for the, uh, particularly regarding enforcement and implementation. But the standards that we're, um, petitioning the board for would need to be identical uh, under section one seventy seven of the federal Clean Air Act. So, uh, let's see, and a, uh, uh, if the hearing is held at the State Bar Center, uh, they have a very nice auditorium, it's all set up for, uh, audio visual presentations, and, uh, there will be a, uh, a virtual option available at that location, uh, that we think would, would work quite well. Uh, the last request is that the board also appoint a hearing officer today. Um, and the, uh, we recommend that the board appoint Felicia Orns, she was the hearing officer, who very successfully, I think, uh, conducted the hearing last time. She's very familiar with the, the rules, and, uh, she, uh, the air board has also, uh, indicated that they, uh, approve her being the hearing officer, and she has also indicated she is available during those proposed dates, and she is already under contract with the department, and we've determined that, uh, we have enough money uh, left in their contract to cover, uh, her services for this hearing. So, uh, I know that's a lot, but, uh, I'm very specific, but, uh, we, uh, request that this board, uh, vote to hold a hearing uh, November thirteenth through sixteenth at the State Bar Center. And appoint Felicia Orns as the hearing officer, and I'll leave it to the board's discretion whether they want to, uh, wrap that into one motion or vote separately on any of those issues. Uh, if the board approves these requests, uh, the Environment Department and the, uh, Albuquerque's Burn Leo County Environmental Health Division will file the rules by December first. Thus allowing the rules to go into effect in time for the beginning of the car manufacturers' model year twenty twenty seven, because the, uh, the federal rules require a two year notice period for the manufacturers of, uh, to, and to adapt, uh, to the, the new rule, so. If we are not able to get the rule, uh, if we are not able to file the rule by December first, we would miss that deadline. And we would have to wait a whole nother model year to, uh, have the rule going into effect. So, that is our request, and if there are any questions, I am more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, appreciate that, and thank you for your presentation as well. Uh, members, yes, member Garcia.
Thank you, um, chair, and thank you, Mr. Knight, for your presentation, um, Miss Orchard as well. Um, the question we always ask is, do you anticipate opposition? Well, for this many days, I suppose you are anticipating opposition, but if, if, um, would the opposition be from the manufacturers or the dealers, what, who do you anticipate opposition from?
Yeah, we, I, I think, uh, to be, um, to be frank, yeah, we do anticipate, uh, and I, I wouldn't even say opposition, but I would say participation, we expect, uh, uh, more participation in, uh, this hearing even more than we had the, uh, for the original adoption of this rule. Uh, because it does, this rule goes further than advanced clean cars one. Because especially we're including advanced clean trucks and the low notch, uh, provisions. Uh, we have observed, uh, other states adopting this rule. Uh, this California rule, of, of course, California successfully adopted it, um, earlier this year, and, uh, other states are adopting it, I think, uh, one state had a, a hearing, uh, yesterday, in fact. Um, I think we are seeing, what we are seeing is that the manufacturers uh, in these other state rulemakings and in the California proceeding, we saw that the manufacturers are, are largely on board with this, I think there was a lot of stakeholder inputs, uh, in, in California adoption, and um, I don't anticipate, uh, opposition from the manufacturers. But, uh, I, I do anticipate that we're going to hear, uh, more public comments, substantially more public comment perhaps, and uh, also, again, um, you know, more stakeholder, uh, input from, um, the dealers. Although we are going to be working closely with them, uh, between now and the hearing, uh, as we did for clean cars one. And I think, you know, we have a, a good working relationship, and, uh, you know, it's our hope that, uh, we'll, uh, be able to present this rule at the hearing, uh, without substantial opposition, but, uh, we built in the, the three day timeline in case, you know, that's, that's not true, or in case, uh, again, there's just a lot more discussion and input, uh, and, and maybe, you know, proposed, uh, alternative language or proposed, uh, um, changes to the rule, uh, from stakeholders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, uh, fellow board members, any other questions? Yes, member Honker.
I'd, I'd like a refresher from council on board participation in the hearing and required numbers, or, um, specifically, I'm going to be out of town for sure on the thirteenth and possibly the fourteenth. Uh, I'll be happy to, uh, review all the written materials, uh, uh, review, uh, transcripts or, or videos of, of the hearing days. review transcripts or videos of the hearing days I missed. I'll have to do that in a hurry. But could you just refresh us on, you know, degree of board participation in the hearing that's required to deliberate immediately thereafter?
Yeah, you'll need a majority to vote on it, on whether you want to adopt it. And the hearing officer will present a report for your consideration afterwards on what occurred and whether there was public comment and whether there are proposed amendments. And then you'll have to decide. You can vote to amend parts of it if they're not significant based on what was originally proposed. But if there are significant or substantial changes that are proposed, then that will have a different, will have a different procedure for that. I can give you more details on that. Will anyone else be unavailable?
I will be available, but I don't know that the hearing officer will have an opportunity to present a report if we're going to deliberate on the sixteenth.
And it would be, you guys are going to meet on the seventeenth?
Yeah. We might want to talk about that again.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And because of, the nature of this, would be my proposal that you allow her the time to provide a report because this is quite significant and that we could deliberate on the seventeenth and vote on it on the seventeenth. Are you not going to be here?
I will be. I suggest that we deliberate and vote on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth, and that's fine too. And we can talk with the hearing officer and see if, and she's on, so she's on.
Oh.
Say what she says.
Yes, Ms. Orth, I'm sure you've been listening in on the conversation. Then do you have any input or thoughts on some of the questions that have arisen?
Yes, Madam Chair. So the first Clean Cars hearing that I conducted was back in the two thousands. It was oh eight or oh nine, I think Sandra might remember, that member, Eli. And the board deliberated immediately following the closure of the evidentiary record. Both boards deliberated immediately following the close of the record. The same thing was true last, the second Clean Cars hearing. Because these timelines are tight and there are a number of deadlines that the petitioners are squeezed by, it's often the case that instead of filing a report, the boards deliberate rather promptly. So that, I think, would make it a challenge for Member Hunker to review enough of the record between the, what, fourteenth and fifteenth or fourteenth and sixteenth to be able to vote. But perhaps the, the question of whether he's been able to review enough of the record could be left to him in real time, so long as you still have a quorum. I don't, I believe, is Pam still making video recordings of the hearings in addition to the transcript?
Yes.
Okay, so the transcript will not be prepared between the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, sixteenth. But the video recordings can be uploaded to the cloud within an hour or two.
Thank you, Ms. Orth, for your response. Appreciate that. And with that, legal counsel, would it be possible therefore for Member Hunker to view those and then be part of the deliberations when he gets back from? Is that a process that would be allowable?
So the rule simply says that if a quorum of the board attended the hearing, and the hearing notes indicates that you can make a decision on this rule at the end of the hearing, then you may do so. Whether Member Hunker is part of that quorum that is in attendance or not, I will need to, I will need to double check on that. I'm not sure. Your rule doesn't specify. If you have a quorum and Member Hunker, absent Member Hunker, it would be my proposition that simply the rest of the board vote on it.
Thank you, thank you.
But I do want to double check.
Okay, all right. That's fair. Yes, Member Garcia?
So it sounds like the four of us are available, so that is a quorum.
And if Member Bitzer is also available, that might be.
And who knows, we might even have seven, four.
Right. Hunker would. Yes, so I think if four of us are at least available, I haven't marked out the whole week. And Vice Chair Trujillo, what is your schedule?
I think I can be available. Do not let two of that happen.
Good, good. That's great, that's great. With that, is there any other detail that the board would like? Questions for Mr. Knight or Ms. Orth is on the line? And I just want to just chime in and say hi to Ms. Orth. And I'm comfortable also with Ms. Orth, and we've worked with her on a number of issues. So with that, yes.
I have a question for Mr. Knight. Has anybody filed a petition to this hearing besides?
Yeah, board member, Trujillo, the, no, not at this point. We are, again, we're, we have kind of done some, I guess, you know, prepetition outreach, obviously. And this is a national thing, so everybody is, everybody involved in the industry is very aware of it. And, but at this point, you know, it is, we really don't have a good feel for whether anyone else is going to file technical testimony, let's say, as opposed to just giving public comment on the rule. So we're, again, we're working with all the interested parties to address their concerns. And hopefully, we'll, you know, our hope is to be able to present the rule changes as we did last time. I think, well, let's see, I guess there are, if you want to, there's, there's, there are public interest groups that may file technical testimony and just participate. And we, you know, we think, strongly believe that they will be advocating for the rule as we are proposing it. But again, they may, they may decide to have some alternative proposed language or something like that. But we think that all the groups we know of that might file an NOI at this point would hopefully be in support of.
Just kind of reaching back to my memory of when we did ACC one and had a lot of public participation, which I always think is wonderful. But is there any lessons learned that maybe we can help, to help facilitate another hearing like this? It's going to be filed from petition. So I'm just kind of trying to add to the group that there's something we can do to make sure everybody gets heard, move it along well, and not get too off the rails.
Yeah, I strongly agree. And, yeah, I think we, I think we definitely have learned some lessons from the first hearing about how to hopefully, you know, prevent what, any, any kind of last minute participation that, you know, public comment that bleeds over into technical testimony and things like that. So I think we can have a cleaner, use what we learned last time and have an even cleaner hearing than we did for Clean Cars one. Cleaner. And we also, we're going to have three public meetings in different locations around the state to, you know, to get input from, you know, actively reach out to get input and maybe even, you know, improve our proposal before the hearing so that we can, again, avoid anyone showing up at the hearing with a proposal that we haven't heard before. And hopefully be able to respond to any proposed changes proactively.
Thank you. I can't say that. We can sit there all night and try to dispute. Where are your public meetings? Would you?
Yes.
Vice for Trujillo. We're having one on the sixteenth, October, from the International Library, International District Library. One on September nineteenth, October, head to reserve the South Side Ranch Santa Fe Library. On twenty nineteen, on October four, we're going to have still like works.
Thank you for your questions, Vice Chair, and I'll start with a member. Evening.
Your Chief, what, where is the international?
It's the International District of Albuquerque.
Oh, International District, got it.
Yeah, it's a brand new, a brand new, not brand new, but it's new, right? Beautiful, actually. Recommend, go see it. It's a new city, I guess, a county facility near the fairgrounds in Albuquerque.
Yes, Ms. Jones?
Ms. Portred, could you, a member of the public couldn't hear the dates of the public meeting. Could you repeat them, please?
Sure. October sixteenth is the Albuquerque at the International District Public Library. Four thirty to six thirty at the times. And then September nineteenth, tentatively, four thirty to six thirty at the South Side Ranch of the Santa Fe Public Library. And then October four, Vio Webex or some other video streaming service, also between four and sevenish. We didn't want to get ahead of ourselves. We haven't voted yet.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. I know our AC came on and kind of farmed the microphone. With that, members, yes, Member Garcia?
If there's not any other questions or discussion, I could go ahead and make a motion that we set EIB on three dash fifty-six, a hearing on November thirteenth through the sixteenth in conjunction with the Albuquerque Air Quality Board at the State Bar Center in Albuquerque. And that we have Felicia Orth as our hearing officer.
Thank you. And I want to just do a double check with legal counsel. Is that motion comprehensive enough?
Yes.
Did we hit all the points on the motion?
I believe so. It's the date, the location, and the hearing officer.
And do we have to add in that we will potentially deliberate? And make a thing in your notes? Okay, okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Hunker, for your second. And looking around, no further discussion. So, Ms. Jones, for the record, could you do a roll call vote on Member Garcia's motion? Yes. Member Eli, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
And passes? Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you for coming, Mr. Knight and your chief. I appreciate the presentation as well as our board. With that, our next, the next agenda item, EIB twenty-three slash fifty-nine on the matter of proposed amendments to twenty dot three dot four dot four oh four NMAC, twenty dot three dot four dot four five NMAC, and twenty-three dot three dot five dot fifteen NMAC, twenty-three dot, oh, twenty dot three dot twelve dot thirteen NMAC, and twenty dot three dot fifteen dot fifteen nineteen NMAC. And this is a petition for hearing. And I see, I don't know if Ms. Chai is on online, but we have Ms. Engelmann for counsel for the department as well as another guest here. And I just want to turn the floor over. And if you could, just introduce yourself for the record and the four chairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members. My name is Tatiana Engelmann. I'm here on behalf of the Mexico Department of Environmental Department, Radiation Control Bureau. As you've heard, it sounds pretty complicated. There's a lot of numbers. But actually, what we're asking is pretty similar to Agenda Item number two. The changes to the regulations are quite simple and concise. It's just happening to some very distinct parts. We, these amendments and changes are to bring the regulations in line with the NRC, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, pardon me. They have, we operate our state program. There's a federal program. We are at risk of, not really at risk, but potentially at risk of losing our program to the NRC if we don't update these regulations. Again, as I mentioned, they're pretty simple. We've only asked for an hour hearing. We don't anticipate a whole lot of pushback or public comment or controversy of any kind. They're really are quite simple. All of the regulations that we're changing comply with the RAPS, which is, I just forget what it stands for. The Regulation Amendment Tracking System, that's something from the, the federal government. And you can see, we put in our statement of reasons and Exhibit Three is a spreadsheet that kind of details those changes. Really quite simple changes and just to bring us in conformity with what the feds want us to do. We don't anticipate, as I said, we don't anticipate a whole lot of any issues. We would ask that if Chair Member Eli could be the hearing officer, similarly to what was requested in the second agenda item today. Because these are, again, so simple, there's no, there's no other, somebody on the other side of it. And if she's amenable to that, we, since we're only requesting one an hour, we thought we could tack it on to November seventeen. But that's a really big week for you guys. The reason we're asking kind of for it to happen fairly quickly, again, is because we don't, we're a little bit out of compliance on a couple of these. It's not really a risk that the feds are going to suddenly jump in and take this program away, but we would like to become compliant as quickly as possible. And I'll actually ask Mr. Ortiz, Michael Ortiz with Radiance Control Bureau, if he has anything to add.
No, these are just compatibility regulations. And they, they give us three years after they're issued by the federal government to adapt them. We have at least two of them that we're past, do you want? And hopefully the rest of them will be able to face and satisfy requirements with the agreement with the Nuclear Administration.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Fellow board members, do you have any questions? Yes, Member Garcia?
No, we've all done, been hearing officers for at least one hearing. And so for Member Eli to get caught up with the. No, I'm just kidding. She's already doing one. So if you don't want to do two, I could volunteer for the second one.
Just a quick comment. I think any board member could manage to hear just fine. And often, you wouldn't necessarily have the same board member doing back to back hearings.
Yeah. I was trying to be efficient, but.
And also, just a second comment. I wonder if the board wants to revisit the date of the air hearing, considering it's right up against the car hearing. We've adjourned today and maybe consider both hearings at our December meeting instead. And I don't know if we can do that now that we've already ruled on that first air regulation and when we might hear it. But I'm just starting it out as a possibility to not have too much up in one week for the board. Thank you for that, Member Eli. And I just want to look to our legal counsel. I know we have made a decision on EIB twenty-three fifty-two already. I know we have made a decision on EIB 2352 already. And just want to give you the floor, Ms. Bowen. What are your thoughts?
I would advise the board not to revisit the 2352 since it's already been voted on. There were members of the public present who were, had an interest in it in addition because of the way that the agenda has been laid out. It could cause some notice issues, would just be my concern. I do think that in this case, for this item, setting it for that December, December meeting would be more than reasonable if you don't want to pile on for that November.
I would certainly agree to have the brand of hearing.
And so I want to look to Ms. Engelmann and Mr. Ortiz. Is that, is that okay with you?
That's fine. We, I thought it, because they're efficiencies thing. But I understand you guys have a full week that week. So it's definitely was fun.
And again.
Just a follow-up, member. I did hear from Felicia Orth that that, that first one, they proposed four hours, but she seems to believe that it will be much shorter than that. Just is any sort of concern about how long it takes?
Right. Yeah. Right.
Also wondering how late we'll be up on the 16th?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. But then you'll have things to break to. Eat turkey, and then try to faint.
Take a nap.
Take a nap. Yeah. So with that, if we do want to look at the calendars for December, just noting, thanks to Ms. Jones, that the dates that we have are usually like the fourth Friday, which is the 22nd. I don't know if that's too close to Christmas or what you're going to.
I would propose we do it on the 15th just to get it further away from holiday travel. And people take vacations.
I'm a last-minute Christmas helper.
And kids get out of school on the 22nd. All these nine.
Great, great, great comment there. Yes.
December 15th would be, be like.
Okay.
And everybody else? Member Garcia, is that work for your schedule? Wonderful, I see. Member Ely, all right? With that, then, is there any other discussion? If not, let's entertain a motion. Legal Counsel, bone?
I don't know if it was decided on who would like to be there.
Oh, yes.
So. Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Trujillo. With that, I think that's everything. Yes. Looking to our members.
I would like to make a motion that we hold a hearing on EIB Matter 23-59 that are regularly, that are scheduled meeting on December 15th with Vice Chair Trujillo as the hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Honker.
Well, I'll praise the motion.
Thank you, Member Honker, for that second. And Member Ely, for your motion. Looking, looks like no further discussion. Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call vote on Member Ely's motion?
I will. Member Ely, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And then with that, we go on to our next agenda item, which is discussion regarding pending litigation. With that, I want to entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
I will move to a closed session.
All right. Do we need to, okay, just real quick, the motion must consider that we're moving into closed session as authorized by NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-187 of the Open Meetings Act.
So I will move, I will rephrase my motion that we enter in closed session in accordance with that citation that you just read.
Thank you, Member Honker.
I will slightly.
Thank you, Trujillo Davis, Vice Chair. And Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on the motion? Sorry.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
We're in closed session. I have 11:28.
Thank you so much. All right. The motion to enter into closed session carries. Let the record show that the board entered into closed session at 11:28 a.m. And now we will be off the record. Wonderful. The board is back in open session and back on the record. The current time is 11:55 a.m. And let the record show that the matters discussed during the closed session were limited only to those specified in the motion for closure, and no votes or official action was taken. So with that, we're going to our next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 11, which is the next meeting and upcoming matters. So I know we had a long discussion about, earlier about schedule and schedules. So our next meeting would be in September, if any other items come up. And so that would be 22nd, same time, 9 a.m. And would we be here again?
Yes. Okay. At this point, I don't have any agenda items. But should something pop up when we have an agenda, it'll be in this room.
Okay. Is that good for everybody? All right. And I don't think we need to make a motion on that, right? We're good. Okay. So next is adjournment. Yes.
One question, though. We, if scheduling some hearings for November and December, we changed the dates of those meetings. Do we need to do anything else in terms of changing the dates of those meetings? Or will that just be added through the notice?
I think it'll just happen in the notice.
Okay.
It's not going to pass. Yes. Good question.
Good question. Thank you, Member Honker. So with that, we're on Agenda Item Number 12. Thank you, Member Honker. Thank you, Member Garcia. And with that, I don't see any further discussion. Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Honker's motion of adjournment?
Member Ely, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Right before you.
Yeah?